Councilmember Tomas Morgan, can you hear us okay?
I can hear.
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yep.
Great, thank you.
Ready? Ready? I want to call the Monday, May 12th Common Council Meeting to Order. Clerk Toronto, I believe you would like to make some comments regarding the link for this meeting and other expectations.
Good evening, members of the public. For audio quality, we will be muting everyone not speaking by default to maintain good audio quality for council members and yourselves. If you would like to speak during the meeting on a certain agenda item or during privilege of the floor, please submit your request in the chat. Directions to do so will be listed. We ask that you provide your full name, address, and topic you are speaking on, as those are required for all speakers at in-person council meetings. If you would like to be called on during the meeting to provide public input, please insert the following into the chat and you will be called on during the relevant time for public input. My name is full name, I live at address, and I would like to speak on, for, or against an agenda item. You will then be given five minutes to speak. Please be sure to unmute yourself prior to giving your remarks. Thank you.
All right. Disrespectful, rude, or disruptive speech or actions will not be tolerated. Such speech or actions, as well as verbal attacks on any person, may result in the individual without notice forfeiting the remainder of his or her allotted time. We are so grateful to welcome all of you to the Common Council meeting today, and we think it's very important that our citizens participate in the process. And so, welcome everybody, and we're glad to have you. At this time, we're going to have invocation from Pastor Brandon Soche, and he's from the Southside Baptist. If you all would stand with us, thank you.
My name's Brandon Soche. I live at nineteen three ten Detroit Avenue in South Bend. Wanted to share a very brief scripture from Psalm one hundred and eleven, says, "The fear of the Lord is the beginning of wisdom, and good insight belongs to all those who do his commandments." Let's pray. Our Father, who is in heaven, hallowed be your name. Let your name be revered as holy. Let this meeting and the things discussed during it display your glory. Let your kingdom come, and let your will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Let this city and those within it perform your will just as your holy host does in your presence. Give us today the things that we need. Lord, grant to these council members and those present wisdom and justice that they need to make proper decisions for our community and its maintenance and betterment. Make this city a place of righteousness and justice, that we may all live quiet lives of peace and tranquility. Lord, forgive us our debts and sins against you, for they are many. Forgive our public sins of injustice, apathy to injustice, greed, envy, licentiousness, and all others we have committed. Forgive us our private sins of all sorts that hinder our prayers in blasphemy your name. Lord, please lead us as a community, and these leaders in particular, far from temptation, and deliver us from the evil one who seeks to kill, steal, and destroy. For yours is the kingdom and the power and the glory forever and ever. Amen.
Stand in and repeat the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk Toronto, would you please call a roll?
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Present.
Councilmember McBride.
Present.
Councilmember Warner.
Present.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Present.
Councilmember Naskowski.
Present.
Councilmember White.
Present.
Councilmember Dr. Davis.
Present.
Vice President Tomas Morgan.
Present.
President Lee.
Present.
All nine councilmembers present.
All right, we will now have a report from the Subcommittee on Minutes for April twenty eighth, twenty twenty five.
To the Common Council of the City of South Bend. The Subcommittee has inspected the minutes of the April twenty eighth, twenty twenty five meeting of the council and found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved.
I will now entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Clerk Toronto, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Naskowski.
Aye.
Councilmember Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
Vice President Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
President Lee.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
All right, the minutes have been approved. Special business, we have special resolution recognizing Amy Hill. I'm going to ask Sixth District Councilwoman Naskowski to join me at the podium.
Do I have to give my name and address for the record?
Yes, you do.
Sheila Naskowski, forty-nine, forty-two, Scenic Drive, South Bend, Indiana, four-six-six-one-nine.
Kenneth Lee, nineteen twenty-nine North Huey Street, South Bend, Indiana.
Okay, tonight, it's a pleasure to read this resolution for Amy Hill that's with us here after a long tenured transpo. So, it's a resolution of the Common Council of the South Bend, Indiana, recognizing Amy Hill. Whereas, Amy Hill is a lifelong resident of Saint Joe County. Amy Hill graduated from Saint Joe High School before earning a Bachelor's of Arts in English from the University of Dayton and a Master of Public Affairs in nonprofit management and public policy from Indiana University in South Bend, I U S B. And whereas, prior to joining transpo, Amy Hill worked in leadership roles with the American Red Cross, the South Bend Silverhawks Professional Baseball Club, and Gibson Insurance. And whereas, she joined transpo in April of twenty thirteen as Director of Marketing, adding extensive marketing, communications, public relations, business development, and community outreach experience. And whereas, in December of twenty seventeen, Amy Hill was named the Interim General Manager and CEO for transpo. Following a national search, she was named to the permanent position in twenty eighteen. And whereas at transpo, she led the development and implementation of a five-year strategic plan, which improved the short and long-term financial position of the organization while increasing competitive state and federal funding. She worked, such work helped to support a long-term fleet replacement program resulting in a one-hundred percent compressed natural gas fleet in two thousand and twenty-three. Whereas, Amy Hill managed transpo's COVID-nineteen response while maintaining service levels and avoiding layoffs, along with implementing new policies and procedures to improve transparency, engagement, and best practices. Whereas, she successfully negotiated multiple union contracts with the Almogated Transit Union Local nine ninety-six, improving wages, benefit, recruitment, and retention initiatives.
And whereas, Amy Hill played a key role in the development and launch of the Public Transportation Council of Indiana, serving as the new entity's first president. And whereas during her time with transpo, she served on the Clean Drive Indiana Board of Directors, chaired MACO's Transportation Technical Advisory Committee, and served on numerous committees with the American Public Transportation Association, APTA. And whereas she is actively in the community and has served as President of the Leadership, South Bend, Mishawaka Rotary, Mishawaka, South Bend Mishawaka, sorry, Rotary Club of South Bend and South Bend Parks and Recreation Board of Commissioners. And whereas Amy Hill continues to volunteer in leadership roles with several nonprofits and community organizations. Now therefore, be it resolved by the South Bend Common Council as follow. Section one, that the City of South Bend celebrates and honors the work and dedication of Amy Hill. Section two, that we extend our deepest gratitude and appreciation to Amy Hill for energizing, for her energizing work within the South Bend community. And section three, that with sincere admiration, the South Bend Common Council wishes Amy Hill all the best as she assumes her new responsibilities and continues to inspire those around her. Resolve and adopted the twelfth day of May, twenty twenty-five, by the Common Council of the City of South Bend, and all of the council members signed on to this. Can we all give Amy Hill a hand? I would just like to say Amy Hill has always been one of my favorite people here in the city. Enjoyed her presentation. She's always concise, always precise, and it's always been just a pleasure seeing her do the work that she does. And the atmosphere over at transpo has been amazing. So, thank you. And at this time, let's all receive Amy Hill. Come on down.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate this recognition, and it's always been a pleasure working with the South Bend Common Council. I think just like we worked with the transpo Board of Directors, we spent a lot of time making sure we were being fully transparent with both the cities of South Bend and Mishawaka. So, I appreciate all the support over the last twelve years, and thank you for this recognition.
Councilmembers, would you like to say anything?
Yes, is there any comments from our common council, starting with Ms. Karen White?
Well, I would like to say to Mrs. Amy Hill, I know you're going to miss my calls. I have called on you on so many occasions to support the South Bend School Sisterhood Group, and just recently, another group of young ladies of students. And you've always been there, and I sincerely appreciate that. And when I would call you again, saying we need a bus because we want to do some bus tours for the South Bend Common Council, you never said no. And so, I'm going to miss you. You've already identified the person that I need to call. And so, I'm telling him to get ready. I will be calling you. Again, congratulations, and you're going to be sincerely missed.
Thank you.
I would like to say congratulations. I am sad to see you leave. Also, you have been a force to reckon with. Just watching you came on right before I was elected to council, and you have always extended the services to make sure that the ridership remained up even when the numbers were down. I know the trying times during COVID, you kept it running, and you kept the numbers going, and you never stopped. And I think to allow people with the less, the most vulnerable population, a lot of times, and also a lot of the students that also ride as well, to make it accessible and having free bus passes to, you know, some of the clients and making sure that that's accessible. I remember when Saint Joe County Community Corrections was built, and to extend that route over to them, that was one of the most promising times in my career at that time. So, I just want to say thank you for everything that you have done for the city, for this community, and you will be missed.
I never repeat anybody, but so, I look forward to seeing, you know, you've got big shoes to fill where you're going, and that's another critical organization or a community. I'm excited to see what you do there. People with your passion and commitment is what makes our community great, right? People that care and do things with that love and care. Thank you. And then the other thing would be go Dayton Flyers.
It is an honor to honor you again tonight. Was there at transpo for nineteen years, and a good part of those last years, we were there together when you first started. And marketing, you helped to really energize our marketing program, which led you to the assistant, to let you, you've always grown, you've always flown. And it's been an honor to see that, see that growth in you. It's been amazing to me, it's been twelve years. And you know, when you said that, because it doesn't, I was like, wow, it has been twelve years. But it's gone very fast, and you've done very well. And it's been an honor to see that growth, and there's a special bond with all the transpo family out there. Guests like to see y'all. And I look forward to, glad you stayed here in the community. A lot of times when transpo people have left, they have left the community. But you were a local grown and home, and you helped build up transpo, and you stayed here in the community to help continue to build up our community. So, I appreciate that. So, blessings to you as you continue to grow and to uplift people here in the city of South Bend. Blessings.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service. As a new councilmember, I vividly recall your first presentation, and it was so clear and so understandable. And, you know, the principal part of me looks at that, you know? And we really appreciate it, and I could tell that you are a force to reckon with. And I know you're going to contribute positively and greatly wherever you go, and thank you again for your service. We will miss you.
Thank you.
Once again, congratulations, and we will miss you.
Thank you.
Councilmembers, come, oh. We'll go online to Rachel Tomas Morgan, Vice President Morgan.
Thank you so much. Amy, congratulations to you, and thank you. You will be missed during budget season this year. I'm just, I am just thrilled that you are staying in the community and continuing to share your talents and gifts to our city and to the organization that you will serve. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
At this time, I want to ask councilmembers to come down and take a picture. That quickly? Get to be in the middle. All right, now we'll entertain a motion to resolve into the committee of the whole.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Clerk Toronto, please call a roll.
Councilmember McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Naskowski.
Aye.
Councilmember Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
Vice President Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
President Lee.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
We are now resorting to the committee of the whole.
Where bills are given a second reading and a public hearing before a committee made up of all nine councilmembers. All bills set for second reading and public hearing have previously been given a first hearing and a committee hearing this afternoon prior to this evening's meeting. In addition, we will hear from the chairperson of the standing committee where the bill was discussed and the results of that discussion. If the proposed ordinance is a zoning ordinance, a report from a staff member will be given. In all other situations, the formal presentation on the proposed ordinance will immediately follow the committee report. Formal presentation shall be untimed. Clerk Toronto, can you please give Bill fourteen twenty-five a second reading?
Public hearing.
Hang on, I'm going to pause on that. I know this one is a bit odd. We did, I believe we did a second reading and public hearing last meeting. Mr. Palmer, do we need to do another reading again?
We do not need to do another reading for council discussion.
Only, so at this point, we're doing council discussion and the council action. Thank you, sir. So, strike that request for a second reading, Clerk Toronto. Thank you. Going to do a presentation again. Let's do a quick, do we have somebody here from staff to present? All right, so with so, Mr. Morell, if you could please review the key points of the bill for us.
Sure.
I know we had a third reading and did a presentation two weeks ago a couple times.
Yep.
So, could you do that for us?
Skip Morell, Principal Development Planner, with offices on the fourteenth floor of this building. This is a brief recap. This is an annexation into the city, a voluntary annexation of two parcels on the far northwest side of the city. Those two parcels would account, would amount to eight-point-nine acres. This is just north of the intersection of Edison Street, of Edison Road and Sundown, and just to the east of the Saint Joe Valley Parkway. Currently on the site is forty-three thousand square feet of warehousing space. They're looking to annex into the city to build about thirteen thousand more square feet and utilize that space for warehousing. It's currently zoned I Industrial in Saint Joseph County and would be automatically rezoned to I Industrial in the city.
Thank you. Do we have a petitioner? Welcome, sir.
Good evening, councilmembers. Chris Goduski, Eben Marsh, three fifteen West Jefferson Boulevard, South Bend, Indiana. I represent the petitioner. One of the pieces of information from the last meeting was the fiscal analysis, which that resolution was passed. It was going to be a positive net benefit and tax revenue for the city. And the purpose of this annexation is to provide water service for fire suppression. The client will bring about a half dozen jobs, use union labor, and pay very decent wages at his facility here. And he'd be delighted to be part of the city.
Thank you. Councilmembers, any preliminary questions at this time? Seeing no preliminary, missed, online. Seeing no preliminary questions, at this time, we will go to the public portion of the hearing. Yes, oh, we've done the public portion. This bill's cut me off. So, at this time, then, any comments or council action?
No, just, Mr. Chair, I'd just like to thank the gentleman for following up on those requests. And I think that what he provided and his follow served as excellent news regarding the jobs, the union workers, the salaries, just the whole package. I think he's going to bring some great excitement to that section in town. So, very happy and looking forward to voting on that when that opportunity arises.
Then I would just say, as the First District Representative, thank you for wanting to stay here and add on to where you're at and for the jobs that you're going to be bringing to the area. So, thank you very much. Send it to the full council.
Thank you.
I make a motion that we send fourteen twenty-five to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second. Motion and a second for to send forward with a favorable recommendation. Clerk Toronto, could you do a roll call for us, please?
Councilmember Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Naskowski.
Aye.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Vice President Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
President Lee.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Fourteen twenty-five will go forward with a favorable recommendation. Clerk Toronto, can you please give Resolution nineteen twenty-five a second reading?
Public hearing on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, approving a petition of the Advisory Board of Zoning Appeals for the properties located at nine oh six, nine one twelve, I'm sorry, nine twelve, nine fourteen, nine eighteen, DuBelle Avenue, and seventeen zero three, seventeen zero five, seventeen eleven, Dale Avenue, Councilmanic District Number Three, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yes, Mr. Chair, the Zoning and Authorization Committee met this afternoon, and we bring this bill to the committee of the whole with a favorable recommendation, united.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Morell, welcome.
Skip Morell, Principal Development Planner, with offices on the fourteenth floor of this building, has stated there are a number of parcels here along DuBelle Avenue and Dale Avenue. The special exception request is to allow construction of two-unit dwellings on U one, Urban Neighborhood One, zoned lots. So, you can see, this is the view of that site today, in an aerial view. So, these lots are currently vacant. The proposal is to build a number of units here. You can see kind of the overhead view in green, and then kind of an elevation view there. The petitioner is looking to utilize the South Bend pre-approved housing plans, some side-by-side duplexes, a stacked duplex, and a narrow house there, a single-family unit. This project, as stated, would feature new construction on currently vacant parcels that are sort of contextually appropriate, that match the scale and the built form of that neighborhood. Additionally, this would complement the existing housing stock by introducing sort of that missing middle housing with the duplexes. This is consistent with the South Bend Comprehensive Plan Objective H one-point-one, to encourage residential developments to contain a mix of housing types, densities, price ranges, and amenities. And this comes to you from the Board of Zoning Appeals with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Have a petitioner present? Good evening, sir, welcome. Anything to add? First, your name and address.
Yes, my name is David, last name Joroge, N-J-O-R-O-G-E, three-one-three-one, Springbrook Drive, South Bend. We're excited about the opportunity to bring new houses, new housing in the corner of Dale and DuBelle. We're excited about the area and what's happening there. So, we are, hopefully, we plan to continue to continue that process and hopefully provide affordable housing for the, for the, for the community of four-six-six-one-three zip code.
Thank you.
Yep.
Councilmembers, any preliminary questions? Councilmember McBride.
Thank you. I was the one that was online earlier and congratulating you for coming into my neighborhood. So, I'm excited about the project. I drove past there, actually, before I got here this evening to see how it was coming along, and it does model a lot of the housing in field that we're doing in that area, especially particularly with four-six-six Works and other independent contractors. So, I'm excited to see affordable housing continue to come into the area. So, welcome. Thank you.
Members with preliminary questions? Seeing none, at this time, we'll go to the public hearing portion. Members of the public shall have the opportunity to address the council on Bill nineteen twenty-five, beginning with members of the public in favor, each limited to five minutes, and then going to members of the public against, again, limited to five minutes. Do we have anyone either in person or online wishing to speak in favor of Bill nineteen twenty-five?
I do not see any members of the public in person or online wishing to speak in favor of the bill.
We have anybody in person or online wishing to speak? Do we have anybody in person or online wishing to speak against Bill nineteen twenty-five?
I do not see any members of the public in person or online wishing to speak in opposition of the bill.
Thank you. We will close the public hearing. Bring it back to council members. Any final comments? Councilmember Lee?
Yep, I just wanna say thank you for, as, as Councilwoman McBride said, thank you for developing in the area and in the third district and look forward to seeing more great stuff come from you. Thank you.
I want to thank you for teaching me something new about those taps. That was good information for me. And I think you live in my district, Springbrook, four six six one four. I come see you sometime.
Other council members, if not, do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to bring this to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for a favorable recommendation. Clerk Toronto, can you please do a roll call vote for us?
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky.
Aye.
Councilmember Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Vice President Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
President Lee.
Aye.
Nine ayes. I'm sorry, Councilmember Warner.
Yes, you, you only had eight to that point.
So sorry.
That's an I. I'll make nine.
Okay, alright.
Whenever you're ready, let's give Bill twenty-four twenty-five a second reading, please.
Public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, approving a petition of the advisory board of zoning appeals for the property located at seventeen zero two Western Avenue, Councilmanic District number six, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Do we have a committee report?
Yes, Mr. Chair, the zoning and annexation committee met this afternoon, and we bring Bill twenty-four twenty-five to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Morell.
Skip Morell, Principal Development Planner, with offices on the fourteenth floor of this building. Stated, this property is located seventeen oh two Western Avenue, owner is A and M Wireless, Inc., and the special exception request is to allow a restaurant use in UF Urban Neighborhood Flex Zone parcel. So, you can see, this is, the site here is just across the street from the Goodwill, along Western Avenue. Then, a closer view of the site and this sort of site plan there. Now, as you can see, this parcel is located right along Western Avenue, which is a high-traffic corridor, largely commercial corridor. And we feel that the, the use as a restaurant kind of corresponds to that, to that density and sort of the, the surrounding uses. So, you can see, the site was designed and has historically been used as a retail and service space. The introduction of a restaurant would fill a vacant parcel, or fill a vacant storefront there and further activate the building, allowing for a wider range of uses, a wider range of times, and again, activating that, that portion of Western Avenue. This is also consistent with the city plan objective LU two point two, which is to pursue a mix of land uses along major corridors and other locations identified on the future land use map. And this comes to you from the Board of Zoning Appeals with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Chair Warner, President Lee, Vice President Tomas Morgan, council members. I'm Bob Masters here in my professional capacity as attorney for A and M Wireless Incorporated, the owner of one seven zero two West Western. My law offices are at three five zero Columbia Street, four six six zero one in South Bend, and personal residence is one nine zero six East Madison Street, South Bend, four six six one seven. I'm joined this evening by Jesse Singh. Jesse Singh is the owner of A and M Wireless. The building at one seven zero two West Western is zoned UF for Urban Flex. A restaurant use is allowed with a special use exception. And when you consider a special use exception, Indiana state law asks you to consider four criteria. Two of them focus on the prospect of damages to the immediately adjacent properties and then the community writ large. The other two are quite the opposite. They ask you to consider the suitability of this property and the, the city itself for this particular type of use. This property on this part of Western Avenue has historically been commercial use of some form. Before Mr. Singh purchased it, it was a beauty salon that had been closed. He did renovations to the building and Mr. Singh owns not just the building itself, but the Boost Mobile Cell phone store, which would be the neighbor of the restaurant. He has a vested interest in seeing this being a successful and thriving and safe retail complex because he is operating the store next door. In fact, Mr. Singh was operating a Boost Mobile on a different part of Western Avenue, more to the west. As a tenant, he elected to buy this building for a more permanent location. The restaurant that you've heard about, Mr. Singh is in negotiations with a restaurateur who wishes to operate an ice cream shop, specifically a Mexican-American-focused ice cream shop. You would see all the usual trappings you might expect, the ice cream counter, the seating. He is working with the building department on his surface parking lot to improve the landscaping and some of the other conditions that the Board of Zoning Appeals have sent to this body to consider. I think it'd be a very attractive use. I think that there's really no better time to be in South Bend. I say that as somebody who's forty-two years old, and I think I've spent thirty-two of those years in South Bend. I just surprised every day by the growth we see here. Housing is, 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 I think desperately needed in this community, and I'm so pleased when we have people coming up with creative housing uses. But let's not forget our ice cream shops. And I think Western Avenue maybe become South Bend's ice cream district. Jesse, anything you'd like to ask?
You'll have ice cream and lettuce.
Go ahead, Jesse, if you have anything. I'm sorry, Mr. Singh's of seventeen zero two West Western. Anything I?
I just wanna say thank you.
Thank you, councilmen.
Council members, any preliminary questions?
Any loafette ice cream coming?
I don't know yet, but I'm finding out.
Seeing none at this time, we'll go to the public hearing portion. Members of the public shall have the opportunity to address the council, beginning with members of the public in favor of Bill twenty-four twenty-five and then moving on to those against. Do we have any members of the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill twenty-four twenty-five, either in chambers or online?
I do not see any members of the public in person or online wishing to speak in favor of the bill.
We have any members of the public either in person or online wishing to speak against Bill twenty-four twenty-five?
I do not see any members of the public in person or online wishing to speak in opposition of the bill.
At this time, we'll close the public hearing. I'll bring it back to council members. Any further comments, questions? Councilmember Nizgatsky.
Thank you, Chair, for letting me make the comment. I just wanted to thank Mr. Singh for investing in the Western Avenue corridor. I've seen that corridor really grow over the years, and you see a lot of businesses along there. I consider Goodwill an anchor store along there because they do so many wonderful things for our community and have a mix of different opportunities. So, Louver Door, which was on the corner, is somewhere where I used to eat at once a week. And boy, do I miss that restaurant. But I, I also want to thank you, though, for the opportunity to put another restaurant there because a lot of the members that live around there, it's walkable, it's somewhere that they can go to and then just enjoy an ice cream, and I love ice cream. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. I want to thank you also. At first, I was a little concerned, but when I heard that it was gonna be an ice cream shop, that made me happy. It makes me think of families, children, and I think that's what Western Avenue needs, not another gas station or something like that, a nice little ice cream shop that's family-oriented. And thank you very much.
This time, I entertain a motion.
Favorable recommendations for all the flavors.
Yes.
Second, to go to the full council.
Including the bill.
I have a motion and a second for a favorable on twenty-four twenty-five. Clerk Toronto, can you please do a roll call vote for us?
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
Councilmember McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Vice President Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
President Lee.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Bill twenty-four twenty-five will go forward with a favorable recommendation. I'll entertain a motion to rise from the committee of hold this time.
So move.
Second. Motion and a second. Clerk Toronto, can you please do the roll call?
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky.
Aye.
Councilmember Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
Councilmember McBride.
Aye.
Vice President Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
President Lee.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Alright. Full council is now back in session. This is the portion of our meetings where bills are given a third reading and action taken regarding the bill that we heard during the committee of the hold. Clerk Toronto, would you give Bill fourteen dash twenty-five a third reading?
Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, annexing to and bringing within the city limits of South Bend, Indiana, certain land located in German Township, contiguous therewith, Councilmanic District number one, north of the intersection of Edison Road and Sundown Road, South Bend, Indiana.
Councilor Warner, is there a recommendation from the committee of the hold?
Council. Fourteen twenty-five received a favorable recommendation.
Right. Now, now we'll entertain a motion.
Move for the passage of Bill fourteen dash twenty-five.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Clerk Toronto, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky.
Aye.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
Councilmember McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Vice President Tomas Morgan.
Right.
President Lee.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Bill fourteen dash twenty-five has now passed. Clerk Toronto, would you please give Bill nineteen dash twenty-five a third reading?
Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, approving a petition of the advisory board of zoning appeals for the properties located at nine zero six, nine twelve, nine fourteen, nine eighteen, Dubel Avenue, and seventeen zero three, seventeen zero five, seventeen eleven, Dale Avenue, Councilmanic District number three, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Move for passage.
Second.
Second.
Hold on. I didn't get a report from Councilor Warner.
Okay.
I know we're ready to grow to third district.
That's right.
Alright, Councilor Warner.
Nineteen twenty-five comes with a favorable recommendation.
Alright, now I will entertain.
Move for passage.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Clerk Toronto, please call the roll.
Councilmember McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky.
Aye.
Councilmember Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
Vice President Tomas Morgan.
Right.
President Lee.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Bill nineteen twenty-five has been adopted. Clerk Toronto, please give twenty-four twenty-five a third reading.
Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, approving a petition of the advisory board of zoning appeals for property located at seventeen zero two Western Avenue, Councilmanic District number six, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Councilor Warner, is there a recommendation?
Twenty-four twenty-five comes with a favorable recommendation.
I will now entertain a motion.
Move for passage.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Clerk Toronto, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky.
Aye.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Vice President Tomas Morgan.
Right.
President Lee.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Bill twenty-four twenty-five has been adopted. Resolutions. This is the portion of the council's meeting where the common council hears bills filed as proposed resolutions. The title of each proposed resolution is read by the city clerk. A report from the committee chairperson of the standing committee to which the bill was referred to and for an advisory review and recommendation is then given. During the public portion of each proposed resolution, members of the public are invited to address the council. We ask that you please give your name, your address, and comments on the bill. You have any questions, please, they will be addressed by the presenter during their rebuttal. Each member of the public is limited to five minutes, with those speaking in favor going first, followed by those in opposition, then a five-minute rebuttal from the presenter of the bill. Is there a committee report for?
Bill twenty-five twenty-seven comes with a favorable recommendation.
I need to read the bill.
Yes.
A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, approving the issuance of scrap metal junk dealer's recycling operations license for calendar year twenty twenty-five pursuant to section four dash five one of the South Bend Municipal Code.
Alright, is there a committee report now?
Bill twenty-five twenty-seven comes with a favorable recommendation.
Alright, petitioner, I ask that you state your name and address, and we have Mr. Eric Glavitch with us today.
Thank you, President Lee. Eric Glavitch, Director of Growth and Opportunity, offices on the fourteenth floor of this building. Bill twenty-five twenty-seven is, would be a resolution that would approve a scrap metal dealer license renewal for Alternative to LLC located at seven hundred West Chippewa Avenue. This would be near the AMC on Chippewa. Per section four dash five one of the municipal code, the application was submitted to various departments through the municipal code requiring review and inspections of the property. This would be the South Bend Police Department, the South Bend Fire Department, Neighborhood Resources for code violations, and Zoning Department as well. All of those agencies had completed their reviews and found no issues with the application. During the committee meeting, there was a question as to why this renewal wasn't included in the previous package of scrap metal dealer renewals that were considered previously, and it was just because there was a new valve that was installed that the fire department had to inspect. So, it had delayed the inspection. Thus, this is being presented as a solo application renewal. So, I will pause there. Michelle Adams had presented, walked committee members through the process that is gone through and what each inspection is looking for. But as I had mentioned, each of the inspections came back with favorable recommendations. So, I'll pause there.
Okay. Are there any questions?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
President. In reviewing Alternative to LLC and looking at the Secretary of State, I was surprised to see that its creation date is May the third, two thousand and six. But it seems on the, from what I'm looking at here, it says that this business has been dissolved. It said it was inactive since November five, two thousand and eighteen. And then it says that years due, that it hasn't been licensed is two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, two thousand twenty, twenty-one, twenty twenty, twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. So, I was just, it says that it typed individual Kenneth Schumacher, Schumacher, and same address. Just wondering, has there been any investigation of why the Secretary of State of Indiana has listed this business as being dissolved? And they have been out of license since two thousand and eighteen.
Unfortunately, I do not have a good answer for you, Dr. Davis. I can, I, I just don't have an answer for you. I'm filling in for Michelle here.
I just think that when it comes down to the, given everything that happened over there at Heritage Island, just needed to double-check on some of these scrap metals because of the fact that I'm checking with their licensing. I mean, to be inactive for seven years and still doing business with the state, I mean, city is out there, I'm concerned that if we were to approve this tonight, we would be approving a business that is out of license. And I know for me, I have to have a. And I know for me, I have to have a professional license in the state, and I can't do business. Else we would be liable for any kind of hazardous issues that go on, if something happens that they are not in compliance themselves, so. I would, um, ask that you could review that and get a good answer for them and see what has happened to their license and why has it been out of compliance for seven years before it comes back to us, please?
Is, is the petitioner online or? Or in the audience?
And we're not at the, uh.
No, I do not.
Forty meeting, so.
Right here. You can go to the gov, you can go to the, um, Secretary of State, and it's right there. It says inactive date eleven five, twenty eighteen. And, uh, this. But, yeah, Secretary of State. Website is.
It also says, what's this?
You'll go to Secretary of Se- Secretary of State of Indiana. I can. But you just go to Secretary of State of Indiana, click on it, it says public business search, and then you put in the name of the company. And once you put in the name of the company, uh, yeah, you put in the name of alternative to LLC. And once you put in the, like, so, see, that says business name, and then you click on search. And then it, uh. Yes.
May I ask a question to Mr. Glavitch?
Well, we'll go. We'll go to questions from Councilwoman Niskoski.
Um, thank you. I noticed, um, where this, it says Police Department Scrapyard Investigation Form Number Four, and I don't know what this means, um, but it says pursuant to section four dash five-one K one. And then it says this business is not registered with Leeds Online currently registered as a non-reporting business status. So, it says only receives non-reportable, reportable items, so I don't, I don't understand that neither.
Yeah, because they seem to have been registered up until two thousand and eighteen. And from that time, they, for some reason, from eighteen to nineteen have not completed their registration.
So the Leeds Online, I believe, would be the reporting system for, that PD uses for, um, scrap metal dealers, um, and the note that they, um, only receive non-reportable items, I'm assuming would exempt them from the reporting requirement, but, um, if it's counsel's pleasure, we can.
Review.
Yes, I, I know.
So I won't, uh, but. Any more questions?
No, I just, I just, I was just concerned that I, I would just recommend that that be found out before we pursue. Um, understanding of what happens and why they're not in compliance with the state.
So, by, by what, we would entertain a motion to.
Table.
Continue with table.
Table. Alright, I will now entertain a motion.
Make a motion to table to, uh, May twenty-sixth.
Second.
There's been a motion in the second. Clerk Toronto, please call the roll.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski.
Aye.
Councilmember Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
Councilmember McBride.
Aye.
Vice President Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
President Lee.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Alright. Uh, resolution twenty-five twenty-seven has been tabled until May twenty-sixth. Clerk Toronto, would you please give resolution twenty-five twenty-eight a reading? That's what it said. I'm sorry, I thought, thought the date they gave me was May twenty-sixth.
Oh, that's Memorial Day.
It's the twenty-eighth, I'm sorry. Yes, right, we will, we'll be having our council meeting on, on a Wednesday, um. Uh, resolution twenty-five twenty-seven will be tabled until May twenty-eighth. Clerk Toronto, please give resolution twenty-five twenty-eight a re, uh, a reading, please.
A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, approving the insurance of tax increment revenue bonds of the redevelopment district of the city for the purpose of providing funds for the cost of certain local public improvements that support residential housing development in all matters related thereto.
Is there a committee report?
Twenty-eight comes with a favorable recommendation.
Alright. Petitioner, would you state your name and address and give us key points to this resolution?
Eric Glavitch, Director of Growth and Opportunity, um, offices on the fourteenth floor of this building. Um, this resolution for your consideration would conclude, um, the legislative process for, um, allowing or authorizing, um, the city to issue, um, redevelopment bonds in support of the rehabilitation of the druries and Elwood, uh, Portage and Elwood, um, properties. Um, this, the reason for the issuance of bonds is that the city, um, was awarded a two-point-five-seven million dollar loan from the Indiana Finance Authority, um, through its residential infrastructure fund program. Um, what this program is, is that the IFA, um, provides municipalities access to low-interest loans, and the mechanism for, um, delivering the money to the municipality is, um, IFA purchases, um, redevelopment bonds that the municipality issues. Um, so in this case, we've gone through the Redevelopment Commission, and the Redevelopment Commission has passed a series of resolutions that essentially authorizes the issuance of bonds, um, and now it comes to you for your consideration, um, so that, um, or provided the authorization to move ahead and issue the bonds that IFA would buy. Um, primarily, the program, the way the state had figured, had put forth was, you know, they really wanted to focus on um, rural communities and smaller communities, but they did have, um, a certain percentage, uh, thirty percent of it, uh, geared toward large municipalities. Um, so it was, you know, quite competitive in that we were competing against, um, you know, mi- uh, communities with greater than fifty thousand people for their population, um, but we put together a strong, strong application, when we were awarded in January, the two-point-five-seven million dollar loan. Um, there, it would be a twenty-year loan, term loan, low interest. Um, currently, IFA's interest rate is three-point-one-five percent, uh, might fluctuate by the time we would close, um, but it will be around that, uh, percent, three, around three percent, three-point-one-five, three-point-two percent. Um, as I mentioned, the, the, it's the mechanism that the IFA uses for providing, um, access to these, this low-interest loan. Um, the design of the program is to provide municipalities, uh, some financial support to be able to move forward with, um, residential projects, um, primarily, uh, something like infrastructure that supports the redevelopment or the development project, um, which might not, might not otherwise happen, so, um, two-point-five million dollars and being able to access it through, um, financing, um, is really important because, um, it's money that we might not have otherwise, and we're able to plan accordingly, um, and really see the benefit, um, from this loan, so. Um, just to give you a little bit of idea, the project that this money would support, um, is a redevelopment of the jewelry site, as I had said. Um, initial plans is for about a hundred and ten, um, housing units, um, they would range from, um, small apartment buildings, to single-family homes, to duplexes, um, definitely, uh, diverse neighborhood, um. And in this particular case, through our, our, RIF loan application, um, we would, could use the funds for continued environmental remediation on the site. We could use it for building roads, sidewalks, sewer systems, water mains, um, lighting, you know, anything that is a public en, public infrastructure and would support the project. Um, just, I don't know if you can read it, this is kind of the, an overview of what the, um, IFA's process was. Um, through analysis, we look at what be the pa, what would be the anticipated payments for this loan? Um, you know, if we were to secure all of the funding at closing, we'd be looking at about a hundred thousand dollars per year in debt service and interest-only payments over, um, the first six years, which would be, you know, roughly what the project, you know, the full length of the project. Uh, principal payments would begin, um, after completion of the project, and we'd be looking at about three-point-five-seven million dollars in total debt service over the term of the loan. Um, here's just the aerial image of the site. Um, the Elwood Shopping Center, um, the city is, uh, preparing to move forward with demolition. Um, we had secured, um, ownership of that site recently. Um, you know, this would be, you know, the actual development would be a two-phase project, we'd look at developing the jewelry site and the Portage Elwood, um, Shopping Center site as well. Um, this is a preliminary design that had been used, um, for our application. Um, you can see kind of, uh, what the planning department's vision for, um, what this area might look like, so it's really exciting um, to see that this could be something that this neighborhood that is, um, in dire need of having some rejuvenation because of, you know, this site having been vacant and, um, really blighted for so long. Um, it's really an exciting opportunity for us to be able to leverage these funds from the Indiana Finance Authority. Um, kind of just touching upon some of the things, in addition to, um, the funding that we would seek through the IFA, the IFA's RIF program, um, we partnered with EPA in the years past for environmental remediation, that was about two million dollars worth of work. Um, we've received, uh, preliminary approval for an IEDC, um, blight and redevelopment, Ready Two Point O grant up to three-point-five million dollars. Um, these are just funds that would also go into the project. Um, I commented that the Redevelopment Commission had taken a series of actions, um, to allow us to present this, uh, to you for your approval. Um, basically, the Redevelopment Commission had authorized the issuance of the bonds, um, authorized city staff to enter into a financial assistance agreement with IFA, and also, um, had authorized that the debt service be paid through the River West Development Area Tax Increment Financing. Um, if adopted, um, by the common council tonight, um, it allows us to move forward, um, issuing the bonds, um, so that IFA could buy them and we could, um, you know, have the financing for the project. As I mentioned, the bonds, um, their, uh, the tr- final maturity would be no later than twenty years. Um, the resolution that you're considering, um, establishes that the maximum interest rate could not exceed five-point-five percent. Um, that's more of just a administrative function, as I commented, um, the rate would be established by IFA. It's currently around three percent. Um, when we close on the loan, um, through IFA's purchase of the bonds, uh, that locks in a fixed rate, so it would never go above a rate that, um, is established at closing. Um, even if we weren't to draw all the money at the very beginning, for whatever reason, um, it's still a fixed rate as we continue to draw more through the program, so I will pause there and, uh, hope I can answer your questions.
Are there any questions? And how soon, um, after approval from the council will things be moved into motion?
We would anticipate closing, um, within sixty days. Um, you know, this, these are funds that IFA would like to, to get out the door, and, um, you know, as you, as you know, there's significant work to be done still out at that site. Um, I think we're getting ready to, uh, mobilize and move forward on, um, removing the foundations that are currently there. Um, you know, we're, as I commented, we're looking to, um, demo the portage, uh, uh, excuse me, the supermarket at Portage and Elwood. Um, so just to answer, sure, you know, short answer is very soon.
What will happen with the liquor store and the auto repair place? Are they still gonna be intact, or?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, they're privately owned entities, if I go back up to the, I mean, you can see there's carve-outs in the plan here, um, for property that the city, um, does not own, so, um, you know, the hope would be, like any other project, we would work with the property owners and, um, you know, incorporate those parcels into a larger plan that benefits the neighborhood.
Any other questions, anybody? If not, we'll now go to the public hearing. Clerk Toronto, is there anyone in, in the public here and or online that would like to speak in favor?
I do not see any members of the public in person or online wishing to speak in favor of the bill.
Is there anyone that wants to speak in opposition?
I do not see any members of the public in person or online wishing to speak in opposition of the bill.
At this time, the public hearing portion is closed. Uh, are there any comments from any council members? Of course, you know, we, we are very excited that this has been a long time coming, so we're getting closer and closer to developing the druries and the Martins Plaza and uplifting the first and second district right there, so. Thank you very much. At this time, I will now entertain a motion.
Second.
There's been a motion in the second. Clerk Toronto, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski.
Aye.
Councilmember Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
Vice President Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
President Lee.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Resolution twenty-five dash twenty-eight has passed. I'd like to accept the motion, um, I would like to entertain a motion to accept the substitution for twenty-five twenty-nine.
So move.
Second.
Clerk Toronto, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dr. Davis. Councilmember Niskoski.
Aye.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Vice President Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
President Lee.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Alright, we've accepted the substitute. Clerk Toronto, please give substitute bill twenty-five twenty-nine a, a reading, please.
A resolution of the South Bend Common Council establishing the terms of the initial members of the Community Police Review Board.
Alright, do I have to come down to the podium?
Okay.
Um, to all of the council members, uh, the governing, the ordinance governing members of the Community Police Review Board provides that initial members of the board are to be staggered one, two, and three-year terms. This proposed ordinance established those terms. One position on the board remains unfilled, that is an at-large posi- position, and whenever that position is filled, the board member will have a one-year initial term. Uh, just to give some clarification, uh, the individuals who are now on the review board, District One, Sharia Williams, accepted a three-year term. She was, uh, nominated by President Lee. Uh, District Two, Comani, Comani Thomas is a three-year term. She was nominated, um, by Councilmember Gooden Rogers. District Three, Kelly Johnson, two-year term. She was nominated by, uh, uh, Councilmember McBride. District Four, Llewella Webster, two-year term. She was nominated by Councilmember Warner. District Five, Roxanne Hughes, two-year term. Thank you, Councilmember, uh, Bolden Simpson, we were looking for that to be filled, and she was able to fill it. Uh, counts, um, District Six, Donna McMahon, a one-year term, uh, nominated by Councilmember Niskoski, at-large District Joseph Adams, a one-year term. He was nominated by Councilmember White, at-large District Cheryl Ash, three-year term. Vice President Tomas Morgan, nominator, and at-large District vacant, uh, Dr. Davis, we still have that, so. That's the resolution, and I will now, are there any questions? I won't, any questions?
Just, just to clarify, if I may. So, when we pass this, the, the one that is vacant will have to have its own resolution separately to make that appointment, or are they automatically? Does your name have, does this process have to happen again?
No, I think we can just do it through a resolution, adding that person. Yes. We're, we're looking to add that person very quickly, so. Any other questions? I will now go to the public hearing. Is there anyone, Clerk Toronto, from the public wishing to speak in favor of, of this resolution?
I do not see any members of the public in person or online wishing to speak in favor of the bill.
Uh, is there anyone looking to speak in opposition?
I do not see any members of the public in person or online wishing to speak in opposition of the bill.
Alright, at this point, the public hearing portion has now been closed. I will now entertain a motion.
Motion for adoption. Uh, second.
There's been a motion in the second. Clerk Toronto, please call the roll.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
Councilmember McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Dr. Davis. Vice President Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
President Lee.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Substitution bill twenty-five twenty-nine has now been adopted. Uh, Clerk Toronto, would you please give twenty-five thirty, um, a reading, please?
A resolution confirming the adoption of a declaratory resolution. A resolution confirming the adoption of a declaratory resolution designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as multiple properties and economic revalidation area for purpose, purposes of a nine-year real property tax abatement for Allen Edwin Residential Builders LLC.
All right. Councilwoman Warner, is there a report?
Comes with a favorable recommendation.
All right, we see our presenter, Eric Glavich. You thought you was going to get out of here tonight, but one more for you.
I'm in more my comfort zone now, so. Eric Glavich, Director of Growth and Opportunity, offices on the 14th floor. This is a confirming resolution for a tax abatement that council had considered for Allen Edwin Homes. Allen Edwin Homes is planning on building 16 residential units at currently vacant property at Marion and Leland. You can see a nice screenshot of the property. The parcels themselves, specific parcels are outlined in blue. As I click through this, I'll show you what the site plan shows and provide some renderings for what Allen Edwin Homes is planning to construct. Joe likes to include this in the slide deck, kind of to show people what that area looked like, you know, over 50 years ago and highlighting that, you know, you know, this area in the near northwest neighborhood has been challenged over the past few decades. As you know, as we've come before council and talked about the projects that we're working on and putting forth resolutions, asking for your approval of certain incentives that, you know, that we support, you know, it's important that we're seeing, you know, significant momentum. We're seeing work downtown, we're seeing work in some of these neighborhoods, not just here, but as you go up Lincoln Way West. These are things that we appreciate and want to thank council's support for, you know, putting forth these ways that we can support developers, particularly small-scale developers, you know, who are taking risks and building in these neighborhoods, you know, that's, as these neighborhoods turn around and we provide quality, affordable housing for South Bend residents, you know, we want to thank you for your support, for those, the work that we do and that you do. Here's the site plan. You can see various units. There will be single-family homes, there'll be courtyard-style development. I'll click through, you know, this, these are renderings that Allen Edwin Homes had provided, you know, in line with kind of that aesthetic of the neighborhoods with the front porches, you know, the, you know, nice trim, you know, really fitting in with the neighborhood. I know there was concern two weeks ago when council was considering the declaratory resolution that there was, not concerns, but there was questions in terms of how, how might the development fit into the neighborhood? You know, so, you know, the courtyard style is, is really cool. It kind of, you know, makes, gives it a neighborhood sense. It allows neighbors to kind of feel like, you know, they're in it together, they're, you know, it, it's just a really, we've seen other models like this in the near northwest neighborhood. So excited that Allen Edwin Homes is maximizing the area that they have to work with here. It's a nine-year abatement that you would be approving through this confirming resolution. They'll be impacting 16 housing units. The city has been working with Allen Edwin Homes for, for a while now, working through, you know, kind of a support initiative. So there will be 12 of their units would be affordable rentals for households earning 120% AMI or, or lower. You know, this has been a project that we've worked with them through, you know, at least a year and a half now, and we're excited that we're finally there. This is the last piece of the puzzle for them to be able to break ground and, and really make this project a success. The total investment is two and a half million dollars, estimated. Even though Allen Edwin Homes is not local to South Bend in terms of, you know, the company's location, they do build homes in the area, they do partner with local tradespeople and companies to build their homes and they're quite proud of that. Just shifting really quickly to the, the facts around the actual abatement. Right now, those, the parcels bring in no money because they're city-owned. If they were to be privately owned, we'd be only looking at $800 a year in property taxes. Estimated taxes after completion of the project are upwards to $36,000 a year. During the terms of the abatement, during the nine-year, we'd be looking at abating about $190,000 over the nine years and the taxes paid would be about $135,000. I'd just point out that this is before the state changes and take effect because of SB1. But, you know, these were the numbers that, you know, we worked with at that time and are presenting to council. Regardless, it's the, the percent, it's not the dollar amount that's abated, it's kind of a reminder to the public that when council approves a tax abatement, you're not actually approving a dollar amount, you're approving basically of new assessment as the result of a project, a certain percentage is deducted. So if we had a 60% abatement and the new assessed value of a project is $100,000, then we would just be abating $60,000 of that new assessed value. So just as a reminder that we're not actually approving the dollar amounts, we're approving a percentage. Our estimates over, you know, you know, since there's nothing there now, there are vacant lots that aren't generating any property, you know, it's safe to say that any development there, particularly this one, would be a good investment for the, for the neighborhood. So I will stop there. I know Brian Farkas from Allen Edwin Homes is here to answer any questions you might have as well.
If you don't mind.
Thank you. And previous to this role as Director of Workforce Housing, I spent 10 years in the mayor's office in Detroit, working in government, so I know it can be a thankless job, so I just want to say thank you. In my role in Mayor Duggan's office, we spent a lot of time tearing down houses. And so to be in this role now and to be working in the South Bend neighborhood, to be investing money into building houses like this is, is really exciting. So with that, any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Just, any questions, anybody? Just for the public that is, that, that's here and online, right now, we're getting $0 for that property. The estimated annual taxes after the project is done is about $35,000. During the nine-year abatement, the total estimated taxes will be $322,977. Will abate $180,000, but still $133,000 will be paid on lots that we're not receiving any tax money on now. So that is the, the benefit for the community for adding a tax abatement and giving developers an opportunity to want to, to build in these areas and have an opportunity to build. Now, my question is, what were the rents for these apartments?
For the 12 rent-controlled ones that were, were putting it at under 120% AMI, these are going to be two and three-bedroom homes, we're probably looking at under $2,000 a month. So they're going to be made to be affordable for police, firefighters, teachers, things like that.
Workforce, workforce housing.
These will not be low income, those I understand are going across the street. So you're going to have kind of a district that's going to have a nice mix of incomes.
Yeah, in that area, they're going to be building super affordable housing.
Yeah.
For, for other people to be mixed use. Okay. Any other questions from council members? All right, if not, we'll go to the public. Clerk Toronto, is anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of this bill?
I do not see any members of the public in person or online wishing to speak in favor of the bill.
Is there anyone in, in the public wishing to speak in opposition?
I do not see anyone from the public in person or online wishing to speak in opposition.
At that time, at this time, the public hearing portion is now over. Any other statements or comments?
Have a quick one. Earlier this afternoon, I talked about in regard to two druries and portage kind of steps and, you know, we're making steps there that's been a long process, getting control of the property and then getting remediation done and getting, you know, or trying to get that shovel ready and there's still time. You know, this also has been a lot of steps. Redevelopment Commission first put out a request for possible developers to build on these little city lots, I believe in kind of September, October 2022. I think March of 2023, there was kind of the first agreement with Allen Edwin Homes and we've continued to make progress. And so it's finally now exciting to kind of get groundbreaking in July and, you know, we won't have homes this year, but soon. So, you know, all this stuff takes steps and it's, it's, I'm always happy, so I, I keep that in mind and I'm always happy to see these little steps be made.
Anyone else?
Yes.
I just, I said it once, but I want to reiterate, I'm very pleased with these mixed-income neighborhoods. It is very good for our school corporation to pull from mixed-income neighborhoods. So thank you, contributing to that.
Anyone else? Again, as the First District Councilman, I appreciate the development that's happening in the First District. Councilwoman Tomas Morgan, did you have your, did you want to say anything?
Well, I will add my thanks to all of yours. I'm just really excited to see this development move forward. Thank you so much for investing in our city.
All right, thank you. Now I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Clerk Toronto, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
Councilmember Niskowski.
Aye.
Councilmember Dr. Davis. Councilmember McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Niskowski.
Aye.
Vice President Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
President Lee.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
All right, 2530 has now passed. Bill's on first reading. Clerk Toronto, would you give bill 30-25 a first reading?
First reading on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, approving a petition of the Advisory Board of Zoning Appeals for the property located at 1114 Mayflower Road, Councilmanic District Number Six, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
I would like to entertain a motion to send to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a public hearing on June 2nd and then send to Zoning and Annexation Committee for public hearing in third reading on June the 9th.
All moves.
There's been a motion. And there's been a second. Clerk Toronto, please call the roll.
Councilmember McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner. Councilmember Niskowski.
Aye.
Councilmember Dr. Davis. Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
Vice President Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
President Lee.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
All right, 30-25 will move forward. Unfinished business. Any unfinished business from the council members? Any new business?
Yes, I have some new business.
Yes.
On May the 3rd, Councilwoman White and I, we attended the Anthems packing party. And it was held at the Charles Martin Center on Lincoln Way West. And this consisted of packing backpacks. And we filled these backpacks for children, foster children. And it was to give the foster, the backpacks was to give the foster children a sense of having something that belongs to their own. And there was nice toiletries, night clothes. And then there was a little stuffed bear, some kind of, I don't know what this thing was, but it was nice and soft, but it was huggable. So it was very interesting and then all this was in conjunction with helping foster kids plus teaming up with Anthems and it was very interesting. And I think we did 200 backpacks and then we didn't know that at the end we was going to get to give some of the backpacks away. So Councilman White and I, we took 20 backpacks and distributed them as we met children along the way, we just gave them away. So it was very good.
Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
In conjunction with Councilwoman Gooden Rogers, this is, you already know that is Foster Care Awareness Month. And just, just a shout out to those people who take in children. I just have mad respect for you to take in children that are in great need and just know that you are greatly appreciated and it's good to have entities like that to support those families. Thank you.
And I would also like to say that the Linden Avenue Market opened on Saturday. It was amazing turnout at the Dream Center and it was great food, great atmosphere, young people, older people, seasoned people, it was a great time. So we want to shout out to the E E team for the great job that they did. All right, we're getting ready to go to the privilege of the floor. Disrespectful, rude, or disruptive speech or actions will not be tolerated. Such speech or actions, as well as verbal attacks on any person, may result in an individual without noticing, forfeiting the remainder of his or her allotted time. Individuals wish to address the council must state their name and residential address. Individuals will be limited to three minutes only, the maximum time limit for this portion of the meeting is 30 minutes. Individuals shall not be permitted to address topics which the council has heard previously on the agenda. And the council president may assign a topic raised by an individual during the privilege of the floor to the appropriate council member and/or request the city clerk to contact a member of the city administration for review and topics assigned shall be responded to at the next scheduled council meeting. At this time, the privilege of the floor is open. We ask that you state your name and address, please, for the record.
We'll do that. And let me, let me be clear, I am never rude, never yell at people, any of that, okay? So you don't have to worry about that with me. Again, my name is Teresa Phillips. I live at 2020 North Mead Street, South Bend, Indiana, 46628. I live in the near northwest neighborhood area, I was going to say association area. I wanted to thank the young man behind me and also his better half that left because I am so pleased that there are individuals who are wanting to invest in District One. You talk about blighted. There's a lot of area over in the District One area, too, as well, that it's been left to just kind of be there a long time. And so therefore, we have a lot of blighted area in those areas. I walked past druries for many years because I grew up on that side of town and I wondered when somebody was going to come and do what needed to be done. I wanted to take a hammer myself or a sludge hammer or whatever and tear it down. For years, it stood there and nobody said anything. So please, I encourage you young, to tell your other partner that walked out, we need you all to come further into that District One and build some areas there that folks need, appreciate, and want. I also want to say that one of the reasons why, and, and I know my time is going to be up soon, one of the reasons why we have blighted areas is because the services that we need and want in our areas aren't there. We aren't given those services. So I encourage the council members, please help us out. We're trying to keep our properties in our areas nice, clean, presentable. We have pride over there. But we have some individuals who move in that don't know anything about pride and so it brings down your area. We don't want that to happen. Measal School is in that area. Our, our former superintendent who just left talked about how angry some of the kids were when they came into Measal School in the morning and I said to him, you'd be angry too. If you had to walk through that area and look at some of the things, blighted area that they live in, you'd be pissed off too. Pardon my French. But that's why our kids are angry when they come to school. They're angry because they see the differences when they go and visit their friends who live in other areas. And so then they come to school and they have to walk through blighted areas again, windows busted out, RVs parked in their yards that don't work, but are still there and just bringing down the value in the neighborhood. So council members. So council members, help us out. We'll be coming from now on to the meeting so that we can speak to what we need in our areas as well. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, I will now adjourn this meeting. Thank you very much for your time. Thank council members for your time, talent, and your resources. Thank you.